Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to this overview and scrutiny meeting this evening. I don't think I need to go through the health and safety instructions but if there are any issues follow me to the nearest door. Minutes of the previous meeting which was held on the 22nd of November have been on the table for the last 30 minutes. Is it okay if I sign them?
Read.
Thank you. Apologies for absence Fiona.
Thank you Chairman. I've had apologies from Councilors Mike Band and Denise Legault and Terry Daubney from the tenants panel and councillor Nick Holder is attending as a substitute this evening.
Thanks very much. And do we have any declarations of interest?
None Chairman.
Thanks very much. Questions from the public?
None Chairman.
We're doing very well. It's a fairly thin agenda this evening or at least I think it's a fairly thin agenda. There's a number of items which are just for note. I'd therefore like to suggest that we concentrate our efforts on those areas where we can add good scrutiny. We all know what good scrutiny is because it's all listed at the front of our papers tonight. I'd also like to say that I watched the first part of Silent Witness last night and I'd really like to watch the second part this evening. So that's our target. Well the length of a meeting is not a measure of good scrutiny. It's the quality of the questions and the answers that we get from them and that's what I'd like that we try and achieve this evening. So moving on swiftly on to the agenda, item five. I know you've all read it, it's pages seven to 26 of your papers and I'd like to ask Wendy and Andrew to present it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilors, knowing that we are looking to make best use of time, rather than to take you through the report that I'm aware that you have scrutinised already, would it be more helpful for you to ask if you have any questions on the information that is here? Thank you.
Thanks very much Wendy. That's a real good start to the evening. Perhaps I could throw it across to the members if they've got specific questions. Gerry.
Thank you Chairman. Yes okay if we run through this as quickly as I can. First of all through the sheets that we've got which are on pages 12 to 26 and you'll note that the even numbers throughout there are all upside down sheets because you can see at the top where it says page 12 is upside down so I can work out that that sheet's upside down but never mind, we can read those. The deliberate mistake in this one I think is on page 25. If I can question your sexual orientation please. It says sexual orientation at the top Chairman and I just don't think the numbers in the middle column add up to 100% so I don't know whether that's going to need correcting. Is that accepted? 94.53 plus 1.56 plus 15.63 isn't 100 by my reckoning but if we can just correct those at some point going forwards, there's another typo on the very first page. Are we okay with that? Page 25 which is page 14 of the report sort of thing.
Can I say councillor Hyman, we will of course double check that if it doesn't add up to 100% we will make sure that it does. Thank you so much.
I'm pretty sure it doesn't because 94 and 15 is 100.
Thank you very much.
If we can also, is there a need for councillor Frost to interject or is she just indicating next?
I'm sorry, I was suggesting to the chairman.
Pat yes, would you?
Thank you very much. Now going back to the body of the report where we've got at the top of page eight, this looks to be good news where we've had 45% staff with zero absence and 67% of staff with zero absence between October and December 2016. That's quite a big change, it's 67 overall and 45 during one quarter. It looks like this is cyclical so I just want officers pleased to confirm is this because of a quarter four spike that normally happens because of flu and illness or and is this sort of normal that things will be much better just coming up to Christmas when perhaps, I don't know, people don't leave their job or don't take time off or unable to or something? Then if, so that's the first thing and I think I've had a nod there from Damien which will probably confirm that that is the case anyway. Then in our fit for work policy, I think I'd like to know is there any way of these figures that we're being given here being, I don't suppose the word is fiddled, but represented in a different way. I mean does this include all the absences and or could the data be presented differently which would give us a different effect? I mean I want to be sure that what we're getting here is a straight representation particularly because of halfway down the page, the second number one with a bracket says the reasons for absence for members of staff currently on long term sickness absence include cancer and non-work related mental health. And I wonder whether we had figures which take those out because obviously it would be nice to know what the sort of normal sicknesses are compared to the long term. And I think in the past we've been told that these have been adjusted for long term but I don't know whether these are or not. I think then if we move on to the next page, page nine, it says, the third paragraph down says we've also received positive feedback from applicants on the quality of the recruitment literature which is excellent news of course. Can we see that so that we can learn from it for other things the council does? And Waverley is a local authority, two paragraphs down, Waverley has a marginally higher turnover rate of 15%, 14.9 during that period. We are above the average slightly it appears but the bottom bullet point there seems to be saying that we're heading in the right direction, this is good. The turnover rate's the lowest rate recorded in the equivalent period and I wondered again, is that cyclical? Is it that it's normal that in that quarter we do have a drop just so I can understand these figures? That's enough because we want to finish when we can.
Thanks very much Gerry. Perhaps, who would like to take that? Wendy?
Thank you Chairman. Yes, it is cyclical and we'd be delighted if I've understood you correctly to share the recruitment literature with you. We are proud of it and of the feedback that we are receiving and certainly if members would appreciate greater detail on understanding what the sickness detail is, you are very welcome to have that. I hope that's reassuring.
Thanks very much Wendy. Are you okay with that Gerry?
Actually can I just have confirmation that these figures do include the long term sicknesses there?
Gerry, I think you'll see that on the chart on page eight.
Thank you very much indeed.
Pat, you wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you very much indeed Chairman. I'm sure most of the committee will not agree with me but I think we've got too much information I was quite surprised at the number of pages and then we went into the Waverley workforce profile. I'm really not interested in some of the information that's actually in the profile and I think we could have had a report that was far more to the point and the point as far as I'm concerned is what is our sickness record? What is the percentage of our staff who are sick, short term, long term etc. And that I think can be done on two pages of A4. I'm sorry, this is not a criticism of the officers, sorry Wendy, because I know this is how you normally present this but I'm a great believer in trying to reduce the amount of statistical information we get. If we want to see behind the statistics that we have in a short report, then we can go and see Wendy, I'm sure, and she will provide that information. But it does seem to me, I look round and see the size of the pile of agendas on the paper there, on the desk there, and it does occur to me that this is costing us money. So all I'm saying is interesting report, the things I'm interested in are in one paragraph and I think we're not doing too badly although I'd like to see the rate reduced but we're doing okay compared to others but it's just I think we can reduce the size of the reports and please don't let us spend too much time with statistics we don't need. Thank you Chairman.
Thanks very much Pat. I tend to agree with your comments actually though having said that, there is one point which I would like to make which came out of the graph rather than the massive words and numbers and that's if you look at the graph on page eight, you can see if you compare quarter four for say 1415 with quarter four 1516 and then all the subsequent quarters played against the next year's quarters, there is a sequential increase from one year to another both in total sickness, long term sickness and short term sickness. Now I would have just liked to have seen in any report, and again this isn't any criticism but just what the conclusion is, you know, that you've looked at the numbers and come up with a conclusion and explain what that conclusion is, not the mass of data. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you Chairman. I agree with councillor Frost that having a welter of numbers here is going to overwhelm us and waste time. The request for this report stemmed from the performance metrics that we looked at in at our last meeting where we'd got a year's worth of staff turnover running at about 5% a quarter. To me that raised alarm bells and so we asked for a bit more detail and I have to say that there's not really much additional detail added in this report and I'm still not in a position where I understand whether this council has an issue with its amount of turnover or whether the picture is actually completely in line with what we should expect. And so whether it's presented as hard data or just statements, I must admit I would very much be interested to know what the picture is over four years. Do we conduct exit interviews so that we know why our staff are going? You know, is there a picture out there that says that there are reasons why we're turning over staff? Do we have a breakdown of the staff turnover by service areas? You know, are there specific problem areas? Because if it's 5% across the board, that's one problem. If you know, if we're losing 10% in a quarter from one service area, that's a completely different problem and it's not spelt out. Are we losing people in any particular experience bracket? So I like the diversity and inclusion information, it's really good to see that but the one graph that I'm really used to seeing is the experience profile and we don't have that so we don't know whether we're top heavy in particular areas or whether we're struggling to retain youngsters. So really, I mean that's the essence of my concern. I'm not convinced that this report actually addresses the issue that we put to officers to explain our staff turnover position. I'd rather like to see it come back, not necessarily with piles more paper but with a bit more analysis so that we can actually understand, does Waverley have an issue or actually are we completely in line with what's going on? I just don't know and this hasn't really helped me very much.
Thanks very much Richard. Before going back to the officers, let me collect a few more thoughts. Peter, you wanted to speak.
Thank you, yes, I think generally this is a good report and I would welcome it. Just one or two observations on the note that you made on chart one, page eight, I would look at Q3 for the previous two years and compare it to Q3 for 1617 and the position looks to be roughly the same as it was a couple of years ago and went down in the in-between and overall the sickness rate looks pretty good. Looking through the detail of the charts and the presentation, I feel sorry for the poor old men in the outfit, we seem to be terribly underrepresented with men, don't we? Perhaps we want to be sort of suing the council for a lack of male representation, it's an absolute disgrace, isn't it? You know, I mean really we should be doing something about it. I'm of course talking jest but I mean that's interesting information and we have to publish that by law so that's fine. I would, I have to say, I would quite like to see a little more information on turnover and I agree with many of the comments that Mr Seaborn has made. It's always very difficult, isn't it, to decide on what is a healthy level of turnover? I worked for a large international corporation when I joined it many, many years ago, for the next five years the rate of attrition or turnover was 2% which was absurdly low. On the other hand, I've also seen companies which have an absurdly high turnover and what is healthy? Unemployment in Surrey and in this part of the world in Waverley is now the lowest on record so the difficulty of recruitment is very high. So it would be interesting to see a sort of if turnover is a problem and if recruitment is a problem and this report doesn't tell us that but what is a reasonable level of turnover? I mean we, two or three years ago, 2013 and 14, we were above the national average it says and the latest information is 2.26 which is an annualised rate of 9% so that looks to be improving but I don't know what the figures are for 201516. So I have to say, I think I would quite like to see a little more information on turnover rates, what's healthy, what's not healthy, where the departments are which are giving us an issue, where we need to recruit, where the real difficulties are and whether that's serious. If it's not serious, well then say so and then we can go away. But I think that would be, I think that would be a useful thing to do. There's an awful lot of data here, I think, oh, well, so, fine, okay. But turnover and recruitment it seems to me are the big, the big issues and we need a report which talks about the big issues and the rest of it is, thanks very much. Thank you.
Thanks very much Peter. Peter Two.
Thank you Chairman. Councillor Seaborn and Martin have all read what I was aiming for so thank you.
Pat, you wanted to come back?
Well I did want to come back because a lot of what councillor Seaborn was talking about is contained in 1.2, the turnover summary. And yes, we do conduct exit interviews. I think this is one of the problems because when you've been around for a long time, these same questions keep being asked every year whenever we have the workforce profile and yes, we, you know, planning is still the main area we have problems with. So you know, if we're not careful, we're going to tie the staff up in knots in statistics and I'm always against that. If we decide what we want and we want five statistics, what are we going to do with them when we get them? Is my next question. You know, we can get statistics that say that our turnover is 9% per year. Maybe a critical statistic is, could you tell us, and I don't want to go back four years for God's sake, but what I would like to know perhaps is what our neighbouring authorities' statistics are. So if we choose four items and then we compare them with our neighbours, we can see whether we're any good or not.
Thanks very much Pat. I'm not going to ask the officers to answer the sort of set of detailed questions because lots of issues have been posed but I would ask for a sort of a general comment from the officers on what they've heard.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, of course. Clearly what we're hearing is that what members are looking for is reassurance that the resilience of the delivery of the services is there and what we would be more than happy to produce for you is information that gives you the understanding about the levels of resilience. What would that mean? That would mean the data potentially about the service areas if that is what you find helpful, more than that if there is an issue, what is it that officers are doing about it? We'd be more than happy to give you that information if helpful for you.
Okay, thanks very much. I think Wendy, that would be very, very useful. Gerry, you wanted to come back on that?
Very quickly, yes, I want to thank Richard, councillor Seaborn for reminding us actually of why we've got this in front of us because I got rather hooked up on the latter half of it which was that we're ages sexist and we take on people with no beliefs but I want to ask, can we please, is it worth us saying, can this come back with exactly what councillor Frost and councillor Seaborn and councillor Martin, which I think we all agree on, a single side, two side, three side paper, whatever it is, with that information to the next meeting or is that pushing it too far? Because this was meant to be coming to us in that form.
I suspect Gerry is probably pushing it too far to get it to the next meeting but for sure we can get it on to the agenda of a future meeting and we'll be discussing the sort of work programme going forwards later.
Under the new system so we think, are other members happy with that?
You're right. If we could move on to the next agenda item which is the Budget Management Report. It's on pages 27 to 36 of your papers and Peter, I think you're going to introduce this.
Thank you Chairman. This is one of the regular budget management reports that we bring forward every month so, well, to every executive. So this one's to the end of November so it's slightly old at this point due to the Christmas period coming in the way of the agenda schedules. So it's a standard report, it takes us through the general fund position which is on second page, look at the printed version, page 28, and it runs through the variances that are coming through the services so it tells you effectively what the service issues are going on there, there's a bit of narrative about them and then it talks, takes us through some of the risks that we face in year and we're just, bit of commentary on that. Then we get the general fund capital position to date so there's not a great deal going on with that as you can see, it's pretty much on schedule. Then we go through the housing revenue account so there's a bit of an underspend coming through there, £133,000 net, not hugely significant on the £27 million budget that are housed and run in the environment they're working in. And then we go through the core capital programme and the stock remodelling, the new build and at the end we have some recommendations for some budget viadments and some carryforwards. So really it's open to people to ask questions.
Thanks very much Peter.
Sorry, I don't want to lead on everything but just run through, I've got a few points and a couple of quick questions. I think in respect of two, I think we were told that the Star Chamber no longer exists and it's now called the Budget something or other whatever but just clarify what we are calling it but that's really, I don't want too much detail on that. If we move on to nine, on page 29, I think this is one that a lot of people will be looking at externally which is, looks to me we've got about 7% of our staffing costs are agency staff. I'm not entirely sure that I understand myself which direction this is headed, I think we know which direction we want it to head and you might want to question that yourself a bit further Chairman. And then paragraph 12, it says, I was confused when I first read this and I think it should begin with the identification of, it says housing benefit rent allowances overpayment is increasing due to the success of the government's data matching initiative so things are getting worse because of successes. I think it's the identification due to is highlighting where it exists so the numbers make it look like there's more of it. Is that, so I'm asking, is that the case or have I misread that? Then just mention that paragraph 17 and paragraph 18, one virtually repeat each other, just a note if this goes forwards. Looking at the viadments, this is a very important matter and I didn't have the opportunity so if you'll just allow me 30 seconds Chairman to cover this, what I think is, what I would say is properly, because I think this is very important, it's in respect of viadments and it's in respect of, I don't have a problem with the ones down here but we don't have the list of viadments we normally have that I can see as spread out other than in the recommendations of course where we've got the ones that are in front of us right here. I'm not sure whether this has been viad or not but it could solve in some way and I don't think we need to discuss it tonight because this isn't a budget thing, this is about this year's budget which this element is on so I'm perfectly entitled to speak about it. This is about the £1 million SANG issue which if that was reconsidered by the executive would allow us time to really get our teeth into sorting the budget out over the next six months or so for what we're doing going forward in future. And the two statements which are absolutely vital, I think two short sentences which are absolutely vital for people to understand when they're looking at this issue, whether we should be spending a million pounds on SANGs or whether we should be viadring it is firstly, the best way to eradicate the endangered bird species is to maximise dog ownership within the catchment area of the SBAs. So if you want to kill off the birds, you maximise dog ownership in the catchment area and the best way to maximise dog ownership in perpetuity is to place dog walking fields or routes next to new developments. That's what we're doing. So the best way to kill off the birds is to maximise dog ownership and the best way to maximise dog ownership is to put SANGs next to development. And I've been trying to point this out Chairman and I don't think I can go any further without pointing.
Excuse me Chairman, is that not a matter for community which deals with planning and SANGs?
I think it is but the vehement issue which he raises is a valid one so we'll let it go as long as you can bring it to an end now Gerry.
Thank you Chairman, well that's what I'm saying because you know, we've got a million pounds there, we've got a problem, we're being asked to find this million pounds, we've got a complete, you know, people have been asking me to justify my position and you know, that's it simply stated, perhaps the head of planning would like to comment on whether she agrees that we should be looking at this again and put that to the executive. Thank you Chairman.
No problem at all Gerry, thank you very much. Perhaps I could ask the officers to, Peter, to cover the points, leaving the vehement to the end if you could, yeah.
Thank you Chairman. So just picking through the questions that were asked, the agency costs within the establishment is forecast at 913 for the year which is, it's actually on a downward trajectory compared to the previous year which is 1.2 million and by the time we get to the end of the year there'll be very little ongoing agency left in the business so it's going in the right direction but it also does reflect the fact that there are difficulties in recruitment in certain areas so, you know, it does tie in to what we've heard about the establishment and the statistics. So going on to points 17 and 18 which is on page 31, 17 is the community services budget which is the 40,000 you can see in the column that's labelled, rescheduled and then paragraph 18 is to do with the, so 17 is to do with the classroom at Waverley Training Services, it just happens to be 40,000 in both, the second 40,000 is a business continuity budget to do with the pump house and that's added into the 52,000 in the same column, the balance of the 52, the 12,300 is to do the Agresso Financial Management System which, upgrade which is continuing into the next financial year. So they are definitely separate issues. I haven't got a comment on the million pound viad to be fair, it's not something I'm really able to comment on sitting here.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. On the subjects that have to be answered, are you happy with those Gerry?
I don't really want to necessarily do the Spanish Inquisition on the head of planning on that issue tonight because she might wish to take that away and think about it.
Thanks very much.
But it's a very serious issue and you understand the repercussions for some of the meetings and things that are happening over the next few weeks and the neighbourhood plan and the local plan and I have had to justify myself here, I think it's my duty to do so. Thank you very much for your time Chairman.
Nick, you wanted to speak.
Thank you Chairman. I'm looking on page 33 at the garage rents and I'm at a loss to work out why the underspend on the gross garage rents is £47,000 and we have a loss of £70,000 on voids. It seems to me if we're losing money on empty garages perhaps we should reduce the rent and fill them up. That would be the obvious answer and that we could perhaps do something about these.
Perhaps we can get an answer to that straight away.
Sorry Chairman, I was just conferring, I'll come back to you in a second.
Councillor Martin, perhaps you could fill the time with your point.
Thank you, just one observation, councillor Hyman has talked about this viad and a million pounds, it's his own particular view, I wouldn't want that represented as a view of the council or the scrutiny committee as a whole and I certainly wouldn't agree with his comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, we'll come back to you on that one. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thanks very much. Have we any other points? Then perhaps we can, we can move on. Next point is the Treasury Management Framework, which is on pages thirty-seven to sixty. Peter, you're going.
Sorry, Chairman, I was still conferring, can you repeat, please?
You're about to cover the Treasury Management Framework.
Do apologize, Chairman, I'll move on to the next bit. So Treasury Management Framework, so during the course of the year, the committee will be familiar with us bringing forward the progress on our Treasury Management investment activities. This is the framework that overarches all of our, and governs all of our activity to do with our money investments here at Waverley. So over the course of the year, we invest potentially up to one hundred and sixty million pounds in our surplus cash flows. That's just surplus on the bank on a daily basis, on a cash flow projection. This is the document, there's a suite of four separate documents here, that is the overarching framework that we work within. So you can see on page thirty-nine what those four documents are, they're quite weighty, to be fair, in detail, so I'm not going to try and sit and interpret each one individually tonight, but I'm certainly happy to discuss. So the key thing is, this is a framework that follows very closely to the SIPF requirements for local authorities, and we effectively don't deviate from this. The key change for this year is something we have to renew annually, and the key change this year is that, in line with the budget setting and the Investment Advisory Board, we're looking at upping the borrowing limits within the strategy. So that's the key change, and we can see on page.
Forty-four, I think it is.
Is it forty, yeah, I've got forty-four here. So page forty-four, there's a paragraph there explaining that we're increasing the borrowing from what was five million upwards to twenty. And on page fifty-seven, you can see the planned strategy around the levels that we're working to. So it goes twenty million next year, and it'll go up to fifty million the following year. So those are the key changes, I'm happy to discuss. Chairman.
Thanks very much. I mean, it's pretty fair to say that the policies under which you work, the structure under which you work, hasn't changed at all.
That's correct.
Members, Peter.
Thank you. I guess this will be part of the investment strategy, so that whilst borrowing increases, there's an asset which is on the other side of the balance sheet, so that would put our mind at rest, I would have thought, with extra borrowing.
Absolutely correct. All of the investments that we make, backed by this borrowing, will be through a considered business case and due diligence, so it's entirely related.
So risk is in our judgment on the balance sheet and our ability to manage the whole thing, and I think that's something I would gladly say I'm relaxed about, and I do wish you the very best in what you're trying to do. I think it's a good thing to borrow whilst interest rates are low, and to take advantage of that, and to create a return for the council and for the residents in this area.
Thanks very much, Peter. Gerry.
Thank you, Chairman. In respect of the comment that's just been made, I would point out that you can't run a sustainable system or economy on the basis that you're going to have very low level, almost zero interest rates that you have to pay, whilst you're driving inflation yourselves with increases in car parking charges, council tax, and the rest at anything up to fifteen per cent, that's upside-down economics. And so whilst it might seem a great idea to go borrow money, whilst it's extremely cheap, it doesn't actually work, and it's what has been causing all the problems that this country's got. So I don't follow that. I would, I think you'll be pleased to hear that, I would wish to cover some of the issues in these papers which relate to the Brightwell's development, but that, I don't see that there would be an enormous benefit in me doing so other than venting, and it might make the meeting difficult, because you might have to leave, so I'm gonna pass on that, but I will almost reserve the right to mention such things at the council meeting, if it is appropriate to do so. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thanks very much, Gerry. Peter, you wanted to come back.
Thank you. I wonder whether our Treasury representatives might say what typically they're able to borrow at in terms of the rate of interest and over what period.
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. The period's pretty much open, we'd be looking at probably around about twenty-five years, which is a reasonable period. The rate is, isn't something I can comment on explicitly tonight, but it's not particularly high in terms of, it's in single, very low single figures.
Thanks very much.
Sorry, yes, I mean, the key thing I was after was the time, twenty-five years is a long time, and I think developing a business case over twenty-five years with low interest rates guaranteed because of the rate, because of the style of the borrowing, seems to be a very practical proposition.
Thanks very much. Have we any other questions? Okay, thanks very much, let's, there is a recommendation that this committee endorses the proposed Treasury Management Framework for twenty seventeen eighteen to the executive. Are we all agreed on that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving on to performance management, Sue, I think you're going to introduce the Complaints Handling update.
Yes, thank you. It's a short report on complaints handling in Waverley in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. The headlines of the report really is a slight increase in the number of complaints received from the previous year, and a slight improvement in performance in responding to complaints within the council's timescales of ten working days for level-one complaints and fifteen working days for level-two and level-three. The report includes a copy of the current complaints policy, that's just attached, just to draw your attention to the fact that it now includes a short paragraph on the procedure to be followed when dealing with complaints that are pursued by a third party. We need to make sure that we have the permission of the person whose complaint is being pursued. We have a new complaints database that was started up in January this year, and it's proving to be much more effective and easier to use than the previous one, and we hope that we will be able to get more detailed figures for you in future years. Following on is the number of complaints that are responded to by Waverley, there's a breakdown by level in the table, a detailed analysis of the complaints responded to by each service area, it's attached as Annex Two. As you will see from that, the majority of complaints, housing, received the largest number of complaints, two hundred and fifty-one, followed by planning, eighty-one, closely followed by environmental services, seventy-three. As I said, we are improving our performance in responding to complaints within our timescales, but there's still scope for improvement. And then finally, there's a very short paragraph on lessons learned. This is one of the most important aspects of complaints handling within the council, but it's one of the most challenging issues to get to grips with, actually, not only learning lessons from complaints, but ensuring that we actually take prompt action to put things right, which are highlighted during investigation of complaints. We're continuing to work on that, but it is quite challenging. I think that's all I need to say, really.
Okay, thanks very much, Sue. Members.
Chairman, I'd just like to ask, listening to what's just been said, the building services area, are there a greater sum of complaints in that area due to the lack of service from their current contractors' service agreements? Some of the tenants I talked to have been very dissatisfied with the performance of the contractors, and I wondered if that's reflected in the increase in the complaints in the building section.
Thanks very much. Damien, would you like to take that?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you for your question. I think when this item was introduced, you, I think, Sue, you highlighted environmental services, planning and housing, and those are the areas that have the highest volume of transactions. And within housing, the area that has the highest volume of transactions is the work with the property services team. We did have, as a council, some issues with contractor performance a few years back, that the team have worked incredibly hard on with the tenants' panel and the overview and scrutiny committee, particularly the subcommittee, and we've seen a significant improvement in performance. And indeed, there was a tenants' panel meeting a few days ago, where the tenants expressed huge amounts of positive satisfaction with the performance of their housing maintenance contractors, which was a real turnaround from what we had experienced in the past. So no, there aren't significant performance issues with our housing contractors at the moment.
I'd like to congratulate the bodies that really drove this forward, and it's obviously taken a lot of work, but my comments were made from previous experiences, and any increase in their performance in the contractors must be due to the way the officers and their panel have dealt with them, and I'm grateful for the knowledge. Thank you.
Richard.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks, Sue, for a really helpful report, nice and clear. Just one query around paragraph ten, where you've used the statement, 'The benchmark for responding to complaints is ninety-five per cent'. Do you really mean benchmark, or do you mean target? Okay, okay, in which case, given that there's quite a disparity between the target and the outcome, is the target overly ambitious?
Thanks very much, Richard.
It's been ninety-five per cent for quite a few years, we are slowly inching towards ninety-five per cent, but whether we ever actually achieve it, I don't know, but we are improving.
Thanks very much. Pat, you wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you. It's really to do with tenants' complaints. I do want to say that the subcommittee of this committee, which I chair, and also working with the tenants' panel, it was disappointing to hear the member talk about complaints, but pleasing to discover that they were some time ago, because we have worked very hard with MERS and with everybody concerned to actually get the voids down, to get the complaints down about the service that tenants are receiving, and to get the number of days down when, in fact, the contractors go out to carry out a repair. And we've done some really very, very good work on that, and it does come through to this committee, so this committee does actually see the work that we have in fact been doing. So we are working on it, we mustn't give up hope that we can get it down even further.
Thanks very much, Pat.
Gerry, it wasn't my indication to point the finger at anybody in this particular room, what it was, was a comment on the past, and I'm sure it's a shame that we have to take so much action to get the contractors to actually toe the line and do what they're supposed to do, and involve our offices in a lot more work, no doubt, and our tenants' board, to ensure the work is carried out. I would have thought that should have been in the contract. Thank you.
No problem, I'm sure it wasn't taken as finger-pointing. Gerry.
Thank you, Chairman. On the same subject, I would say that the experience on the ground does not, at the moment, indicate that a general improvement is universal, if I can put it that way. There are still problems, and I'd particularly like to point out, or perhaps even ask Mr Waller whether he would agree from, you know, on this level, that it is sometimes very difficult for tenants to complain about their landlord. To put in complaints about your landlord, it could, you know, so the number of complaints that we get may not actually reflect the problems that we do have, because some people do not wish to take on the council, who are their landlord, and perhaps cause themselves problems. One last comment, when I tried to make a compliment a couple of years ago about the housing revenue accounts service, and it was a very, you know, genuine compliment, I found that I had to actually raise it as a level-two complaint through the system. And I did ask at the time, could we change that? Because I don't like to register a complaint to say I'm trying to make a compliment, and it may, I don't know whether that was registered as a complaint, because it was a complaint that was a compliment, or not. Nevertheless, we don't have any figures in here for compliments that I've seen, and that may be the reason, because it's too damn difficult to do so. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks very much. Adrian.
Thank you, Chair. Gerry, I happen to sort of disagree with the complaints, sort of the process of being able to sort of complain. I think the process is pretty good, I think, obviously one, two, three stage, and I think tenants, they just phone up the housing service and ask for a complaints form, they get sent and they complain. How easy is that? Is that what you were saying? Thank you.
No, thanks very much. I have a general point, which perhaps picks up a little on what Gerry was saying. I mean, we've obviously got a pretty swept-up complaint system, which we should be proud of. It's a good report, the system works well, it's been improved, everything's fine and dandy. However, what we should not do, and the danger always is, if you've got a good system, is to use it as a default position, to use it as an excuse for bad management, and not resolve the issue correctly, taking appropriate action, in the knowledge that you as officers, we as members, have a really good system which will pick it up. That's bad practice, it's inappropriate, it's not using our resources to the best that we can. I should perhaps declare a bit of an interest, because my background is in aerospace, is in aviation, and there the exact opposite applies, where there's absolute transparency, openness to get to the issue before it becomes a complaint, because a complaint is normally And the whole system, and I've found it really quite interesting, being in the council, because it's the exact opposite to what I'm used to, and I just feel that we should address it. I mean, Damien knows a particular instance, and I've just found it so frustrating that somebody with a serious issue can't have a sensible meeting with officers to resolve that issue, but is expected to go through a complaints procedure to resolve what could be resolved in a room between sensible people. So, sorry, that's my point, I'll get off my soapbox. Who, Patricia.
Thank you, Chairman. I happen to feel that a very important part of my role as an elected councillor is actually to try to resolve issues that my residents or residents in the wider area are experiencing. Now, there's no doubt about it, there have been issues with regard to Waverley's properties that residents have come to me about, and perhaps it's because I'm a bit long in the tooth, I've been around for quite a while, but I do, and I think my other colleagues here, also have comments, complaints, if you like, from residents. I've had very, very good service from the officers at Waverley with assistance when I brought it up and issued to their attention. And I think that an important part of the role is to stop these complaints becoming complaints. Actually, if residents feel comfortable to come to us, ask for assistance, we go to the officers, bring it to their attention, and my personal experience has been, the issues have been resolved. Thank you.
Thanks very much, maybe I'm just unlucky. Chris, Peter.
Thank you. I think overall, this is a good report, and I'm happy to note it, and haven't got a great deal to say about it. If I wanted to be picky, I think the only thing I'd be picky about is in section six, or paragraph six, and the graphic there. or paragraph six, and the graphic there, which only has a graphic for the total number of complaints received, I would actually prefer to see a bit more granularity and three or four more other charts, which said, here's the planning position, here's the housing position, here's the environmental services position, in order, because I think it's important to drill down to where a potential problem might be, or any potential problem is masked, because you're only seeing the overall figures. I know in paragraph nine you go into the detail, but I would quite like to see that. If there was to be an improvement in the report, that would be the place where I would see an improvement, but it's not a big, big issue. I think this is, the level of complaints is mercifully low, and they're being dealt with very swiftly, so I congratulate the staff on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Peter.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Just a comment, really, and probably Mrs. Sims would like to answer it. Eighty-one complaints on the planning service received out of two and a half thousand applications that are made. I wonder how many of those complaints were people who didn't get exactly what they wanted? And, you know, you take the opposite view, did those who got what they want compliment the service on the result that they achieved? So, you know, I look at that as a complaint as something that really is a little bit vague, so maybe Mrs. Sims would like a word.
Thanks very much, Peter. I mean, differentiating between issues and complaints is quite difficult, but...
Thank you, Chairman. I can certainly confirm that a vast majority of the concerns that are raised with us are either objectors that are concerned that planning permission's been granted against their objection, and they want further amplification as to why particular factors haven't been taken into account, or apparently haven't been taken into account, or indeed the opposite, where we have refused permission and the objectors unhappy about the process. In the latter case, of course, there's always a right of appeal, but it's appreciated, sometimes it's frustrating for objectors, because there is no third-party right of appeal, so sometimes lodging a complaint to the council is the next possible opportunity for raising concerns, but we do our best to explain the response back the other way, and in most cases they do tend to accept the explanations that we give. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks very much, Elizabeth. We've had a number of general comments, which I'm sure will all be recorded, but I just wondered whether, Sue, you wanted to make any sort of general response rather than specific points.
Just one thing that I forgot to say in my introduction was that really, it's quite heartening, I think, that we do resolve more complaints at level one, well, a greater number of complaints at level one. So we are stopping, well, we are resolving issues early, and obviously the challenge is to improve on that, to stop complaints escalating to two and three, and then possibly on to the ombudsman, but...
Okay. I think we all recognise that it's a good system, and one which has improved the situation. I had a slightly philosophical issue with it, but I'm sure you'll take note of that. Nick, you want to...
Thank you, Chairman. Page sixty-seven, complaints received from a third party. I had a resident who was ninety-six years old, whose water wasn't being heated at all, and she hadn't had any hot water for several times, so she asked me if I would deal with it. I'm a third party, so therefore I should have filled in a form, but I thought that was a complete waste of time. So in fact, I went to see the officer concerned and dealt with it straight away. I'm not sure this third party really applies to councillors.
Good point. Thank you. Questions? Perhaps we can then move on. Gerry, you wanted to speak one last time?
Sorry, yes, I was just going to ask whether we can ask that question. Do we? Are we expected to fill these in and all the rest? Is this the case or not? But I actually, I want to make a complaint, if I can, if I can just make complaints about paragraph eleven on page sixty-three, and that's the end of my, what I have to say.
Thanks very much. Well spotted. Damien, you're going to answer that specific point?
Chairman, I'll certainly try. So, a number of the complaints that we receive relate to personal matters. It may relate to their financial situation, it may relate to their health or disabilities, it may relate to issues within the criminal justice system, it may relate to issues around vulnerability of children, and so there are lots of issues where, if members are going to be able to have access to that personal information, by law, we need the permission of the complainant. And I think to keep members safe and to keep the council safe, in the vast majority of cases, particularly when at the start of a complaint, you haven't yet had the opportunity to know what you might uncover, I think it is right and it is helpful to ensure that you have one of those in place. Now, if it's a straightforward issue about a heating problem, where you can helpfully report it to the council on the tenant's behalf and get an issue resolved that isn't about, you know, a detailed complaint, then great, I think we should be doing that. But once we're into the complaint territory, where those sorts of issues could arise, it's the best option for the member and the council to ensure that sort of permission is in place.
Thanks very much. That's very clear and very useful, I think. We can move on to item nine, which is pages eighty-one to ninety-two, and is the complaints received from the ombudsman. Sue, I think you're on again on this.
Yes. This is an annual report summarising the complaints that have been made by Waverley Residence customers to either the local government ombudsman or the housing ombudsman. The information in the report on the local government ombudsman is actually based on statistical information provided in their annual letter to local authorities. Each authority gets an annual letter, sort of setting out the number of complaints that have been received. One thing to just draw attention to the fact is that the local government ombudsman now is really following other ombudsman services in describing any fault, whether it be the most minor fault or a very major fault, as maladministration. Previously, if you had a finding that maladministration against an authority, it was a very, very serious matter involving publication of a report, but they've now brought themselves into line with other ombudsman services, and so any fault that's determined as a result of an investigation of a complaint by the local government ombudsman is deemed to be maladministration. There's some comparative figures for previous years in the number of complaints that have been investigated. The local government ombudsman now is tending to take a much more smarter or stricter approach in actually determining which complaints they will investigate. It's only where they consider that there is a risk of personal injustice to the complainant that they will actually take up the case and look into it in more detail. They tend to make much quicker decisions, they work very, very quickly, and it's a much improved service, I think, for both the authority and, more importantly, the customer. Numbers are being reasonably the same of, the numbers have actually been, total numbers have been received in the total column on the bottom of page eighty-two. Three of the four complaints that were investigated by the local government ombudsman were upheld, and, sorry, three out of eight, three out of eight were upheld by the local government ombudsman, and they recommended a resolution, and you've got a summary of those cases in exempt annex two. The other upheld complaint was, there was a finding of fault, but we'd already addressed the issue, so we'd resolved it in effect by the time the ombudsman started to look at it. The second part of the report concerns the complaints looked at by the housing ombudsman service. That service now looks at all complaints that come through from tenants or leaseholders of the council. They take quite a different approach to the local government ombudsman, they're dealing with complaints from a large number of social housing providers. They are clearly overwhelmed with work at the moment, and it takes on average between nine and twelve months to actually, for a complaint to actually go through their system and to be investigated and determined. Complainants have the option of, once they've exhausted our complaints procedure, they have the option of going to a designated person, that could be a local district councillor or borough councillor in this case, an MP, or the designated complaints tenants' panel, which we have one here, and this last year they looked at two complaints that were brought forward by tenants, and those are summarised in paragraphs twelve and thirteen. And then they have, they looked at three, the housing ombudsman looked at three complaints in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. None of them have been determined by the end of that year, but they have now actually come to a decision on two of those three complaints, and those are summarised in exempt annex three. We're still waiting for a response on the third one.
Thank you very much, Sue. Members, have we any points? Peter.
Thank you. I'm glad to see the Martins do very well, as being ombudsman around the place. The only query I've got is looking back to the previous paper and noting the graphic on paragraph six on page sixty-two, which identifies the level of ombudsman complaints. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, that looks to be a figure of three or four, and there was nothing in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. When I turn to this report, and I look at page eighty-two and look at the complaints which go to the ombudsman, I find twenty-six. Can we please have a reconciliation between the two? Or in the graphic on page sixty-two, is that only the complaints upheld, or what is the explanation between the two sets of figures?
Thank you very much, Peter. Sue.
I take what you're saying. I think it might be something to do with our database stats, but the statistics produced by the local government ombudsman are correct, so you're right, we should have shown something in there.
Well spotted, Peter.
If that's the case, then the graphic on page sixty-two is very underrepresented.
Yes, I'll look at that.
Any other questions? Nick.
Thank you, Chairman. Page eighty-four, I gather complaints were made to the housing ombudsman service, and a complaint hadn't been, the answer hadn't been received by March twenty sixteen. Well, that's nearly a year ago. I'm just wondering why this report hasn't been slightly updated since then.
Sue.
This report is actually for complaints that were looked at in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, so we're looking at, the cutoff point has been thirty-first of March. I've actually just, for sake of completeness, summarised the outcome of the, two of the three investigations that the housing ombudsman made there in the current year, but I thought it would be helpful to give the five, because we have the final answer, but it's taken a long time to get to that point. Yes, because the two of the three, none of the three complaints that were looked at by the housing ombudsman in two thousand fifteen, sixteen were actually determined. So the determination that the housing ombudsman made has been in the current year, that's really outside the scope of this report, but I thought it would be helpful, as we had the answers, to give them to you, but...
Thank you very much. Are you reasonably happy with that, Nick?
Reasonably happy, Chairman, yes.
Any other questions? In that case, we can, we could move on. I've got Hugh Wagstaff on my list here as presenting update on Waverley's family support services, but Damien, you're on.
Chairman, I hope members will see this as a good news report. This is a service that Waverley developed in two thousand and twelve, really was in its infancy in terms of thought processes, before the government had come forward with its National Trouble Families Programme. Waverley led the pilot for the whole of Surrey to establish a team around the family, which was about focusing on those families in greatest need, often in a point of crisis, stuck, unable to know which way to turn, and to work intensively with those families to help them get back on their feet. The pilot was a great success. We then promoted the programme across Surrey, and the take-up has been fantastic, either on a borough-by-borough basis, or boroughs sharing a team between two boroughs. In the latest performance reports, Waverley comes out as the highest performing family support team in Surrey, and it's a service that makes a huge difference on the ground and works with families that the system, individual agencies working in isolation, really weren't able to progress. And one of the hallmarks of this approach, as well as the intensive approach, that could involve the family support team going out first thing in the morning to get the kids out of bed, to get them properly fed, properly dressed for school, to get the family into proper habits around meal times and time to do homework, but also, just as importantly, drawing in the support of other agencies, making sure that the police, the probation service, DWP, the elements of the county council, the youth service, are all playing a part, and to ensure that in the longer term, where it's appropriate, services within the community, the faith sector, local groups are also being plugged in to make sure that the family have all the support they need, and ultimately that the working age people in that family get into work. Because one of the most powerful ways of helping a family to sustain themselves is by ensuring at least one person in that family is earning a salary and contributing towards their communities. Despite the success of Waverley's approach there, there's been a national study, and this report also talks about the national study, and to be honest, the national study highlighted mixed results. I think one of the reasons that happened is that they didn't look at the boroughs and districts, they focused on the unitary councils. And what they found is that those councils who already had adult social care teams and children's social care teams didn't deliver the scale of transformation that they were looking for. In Waverley, we literally started with a blank sheet, and we built the service up to be as effective as possible, rather than tinkering with an existing service, and I think that's been one of the reasons that we've been as successful as we have. Whereas some of the larger, sort of, city councils, all they've done is taken an existing product, and tweaked it at the margins, and therefore it hasn't delivered the transformational change that our services delivered. But I wanted to make sure that you had information about the national survey alongside the results for Waverley, and that the head of the team, Julie Shaw, has kindly included some confidential case studies for those members who may not have direct contact with the team, to give you a flavour of some of the issues that the team are tackling and are proving incredibly successful with. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks very much, Damien. I greatly appreciate those case studies. I think when you've been reading a dry report for several hours, coming to them puts it all into perspective. Members. Coast, Lefrost.
Thank you, Chairman. I know quite a lot about this particular scheme, and I really would like to congratulate the team. They are doing a superb job, and they really are leading on it, and it is a shame that in fact with the other councils, they've just taken what's there and tweaked it, whereas we had a greenfield site, if you like, and we started from scratch on this one. And I've actually heard about schemes and cases firsthand from adult social care, and it really is, it is a fantastic scheme. And what is so good about it is that you've got all the agencies, but they feed into one person, and it is that one person who deals with the family, and that's what makes a difference with the family. They're not dealing with ten different people that change just like that, but they are dealing with one common denominator, and that makes such a difference to those families' lives. So congratulations, team, you've done a great job.
Thanks very much. Bob, you want to speak?
Yes, I just, I'm sorry about that. I'd like to congratulate the team for their approach and the joint upwriting that they're doing. It's a pity it can't be extended to further in the country, because so many agencies seem to be working on their own, and it does need somebody to forefront and to coordinate, but we don't seem to be able to do it in this country. But congratulations to our own department for doing it and showing such a success, and I hope it gets noted more generally.
Thanks very much, Bob. Just as a thought there, would it be appropriate for us specifically to send a message to the team of our appreciation?
Not, dear. Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I always look forward to this report. It's, you know, as Damien said, it really brightens up the evening, so that's great. Just looking at the figure on page ninety-five, a lot of the information there, it tells us the number of families that are engaged, but it's the number engaged each month, and of course, some of them are... of course, some of them are, or most of them are probably engaged for several months. Is there any way of backing out of this, how many cases were actually closing out during the year, so that we can actually see the total number of families that have been helped during the course of the years? Okay.
Chairman, the answer is yes. The information is not, not in the report or at my fingertips, but absolutely, we know how many cases we open every month, how many cases we close and the nature of this service is, is short-term intensive support and then to ensure that they're in safe hands going forward, so there is always a time limit on the, the amount of work that we do with a family.
Thanks very much Damien. Peter.
Thank you. The theory of this was very obvious and it's great to see that in practice it's working here and sadly, as we've heard, it's not the same across the country and it would be a tragedy for me, I think, as far as I'm concerned, if this programme were withdrawn because nationally it's not, doesn't appear to be working, because I think locally we can demonstrate that it is working, it makes a difference to people's lives, it takes away this playing one agency off against another and the multiple agencies involved and bringing it down so that only one or two, everything is channelled through one or two of those groups. It makes perfect sense to me and I would certainly wish to see a message of thanks go to the team and long may they continue. I think it would be interesting to get a little bit more detail on how many are closed off in what period of time and of course in the long term, whether we get then re-referrals. In other words, are these, are these short-term bursts then, does it keep happening or are we really making a permanent difference? Because the intent is that we, we do make a permanent difference to these people and it would be great if we had a little more information on that, but I think it's a terrific programme and I would wish to see it continue and to have continued success.
Thanks very much Peter. Any other points? Damien.
Chairman, Councillor Martin's response just reminded me that this is also a really good example of partnership working with Surrey County Council. It's a really effective partnership and we're really grateful for the amount of support that we get from Surrey to enable us to do this work.
Thanks very much. Gerry.
I think, I hope everybody agrees, this is something, there are certain things which we cannot afford not to do.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no other points, if we could move on then to item twelve, which is the minutes of the meeting of the Housing Improvement Subcommittee.
Eleven.
Oops. Have I jumped? No, I've got a typo on this. Item eleven. Pat, would you like to say a few words on this?
I don't think there's really much to say. We continued working as we always do and looking at the MERS contract. I know MERS are in a different sphere, but we still keep on looking at it to see how we can improve for the benefit of our tenants. It's a very interesting subcommittee because we do get to the heart of things and we're very grateful for the work that we do with the tenants' panel and they're always very much, a very strong part of this subcommittee. So I think the minutes that you have there reflected, and I'm sure everybody has read them, but one of the things that the tenants' panel did quote, did talk about was the item thirty-five, the Housing Quality Network, Residents' Network Annual Conference and quite clearly they learnt a lot from that, which they're able to pass on as far as Waverley is concerned. The Housing and Planning Act has had its life. One minute we're doing a lot of work on looking at the act and doing what it says in it and the next minute the governance rescinded the things of the act, so sometimes we're doing work twice. The interesting one was tenancy fraud policy review. We looked at that, there's a new policy that's just come out and we did actually ask that we refer to the audit committee to make sure that we had followed all their requirements in the policy that had come out. We didn't get very far on, I'm afraid, on the committee work programme, we've got one, but because there are going to be some changes to ONS in the future, it was really, we felt inappropriate to actually come up with a work programme at this stage. It will change once housing becomes an overview committee on its own. And that's all I've got to say Chairman.
Thank you very much Pat. Are there any, any comments? Gerry.
Very quickly, yes, I apologise, I was unable to make it to that meeting a couple Mondays ago, I think it was, wasn't it? But I did notice there was a fairly impressive report on the housing that's being delivered and where it's been delivered as a nice reminder for us, but the one thing that always disappoints me in council documents, and perhaps it was inappropriate to put it in there, but I think it would have been very handy to people, is when we look at what we're doing, what we're delivering, also let people know what the cost is, because things, you know, it's very easy to say we've done this, that and the other, aren't we wonderful? But we also have to look at the cost because that's what it means to the people and I very much appreciate what Mr Waller is doing with the tenants' panel.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sorry, I said I very much...
You've got your mic on, I think, Pat.
I very much appreciate what Mr Waller is doing with the tenants' panel. Tough work, thank you.
Are there any other comments on the report? In that, in that case perhaps we can move on to the typo again, item twelve, the committee work programme. I'm following on from what Pat said really. The, the work programmes are going to be discussed in some detail when we're, when we're having the two training sessions, so I really don't want to spend too much time this evening trying to, trying to sort of go over what we're going to generate in those, in those training programmes. But are there any comments from the members on, specifically on the work programme? Thanks very much. We're not doing too bad for time actually, we're twenty past eight. I'd like to, to summarise, put the motion which is printed, I think it's in my name as set out in paragraph thirteen of your, of your...